Good evening. This is the Dania Beach City Commission Virtual Regular Meeting. It is Tuesday, October 13, 2020 at 7:01 PM. Do you please call the roll?
Mayor Llewellyn.
Here.
Vice Mayor Oddman. You're muted. Gotcha. Commissioner Branhamart. Branhamart.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris.
I'm here.
Commissioner James.
Here.
City Manager Garcia.
Here.
City Attorney Ansboro.
Yeah, here. Thank you.
Please all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America. And the Republic. For which stands one nation. A nation under God indivisible. Justice for all.
Please also join me for a moment. Thank you. Before we go into the agenda itself, just another several people that may be on the call tonight for items number nine, four, nine, five, and nine, six. Those are being deferred. Is that correct, City Attorney?
Yes, until December 8th, City Commission meeting.
Okay, so I just, I want to make sure people knew that early on before we started, got started on everything. Presentations and special event approvals. The first item is presentation by Walmart pharmacist AJ Ubache Ubache on flu shots, shingles vaccine, and October 24, 2020 drug take back program requested by Commissioner Harris.
Oh, there he is.
Hey, hello. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
All right. Oh, good evening. My name is AJ Ubache. I am the pharmacy manager at your local Walmart neighborhood pharmacy in Dania Beach. Thank you, Commissioners and the City of Dania for having me here today. As I speak a little bit about the flu vaccine, the importance of it, and the DEA Take Back Initiative at the end of the month. So I'm going to start off with some numbers. Thirty-five million. That is the number of people that were infected with the influenza virus last year, last season from 2018, 2019, fall and winter. Sixteen point five million people is the number of people that sought medical attention. That means that they had to seek a medical professional. They were so sick they had to see a medical professional. And there were 34,200 deaths in the United States. So as we know, this is a special, you know, special season. There is a risk that, you know, you're predicting that both the virus has caused the flu and COVID-19 to be spreading in our community. So the co-infect, the co-infection is a big, big risk. Another major reason is the burden on our healthcare system. Last season alone, there were 400,000 hospitalizations. The flu vaccines was to bring that down by forty to sixty percent. Now, who is eligible for this flu vaccine? Anyone over the age of six months is, should get the flu vaccine by the end of October. It actually takes our bodies two weeks to make the antibodies. And in children, it takes two doses to get the flu vaccine. So that's why I urge you, your neighbor, your family member, your coworkers to all get vaccinated. Not only to protect yourself, but protect those vulnerable around you, such as young children, the elderly, and those with chronic health conditions. So like I tell my patients, be a hero. Be a hero in your community. Not only protecting yourself, you're, you're, you know, serving the community as a whole. So I like to open it up, end it that way. And with any questions about the flu vaccine or services. We do it here at Walmart, and we also provide shingles, who's recommended over the age of 50. And pneumonia, which is a big, you know, complication when you get the flu, is, is actually from pneumonia. So it's also recommended as well. Any questions about it?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
AJ, so when you're doing the vaccine and the, you do it right there at the pharmacy, do we need to make an appointment for that?
You can make an appointment, but you do not need to make an appointment. You know, we, we have, we're actually stopping ourselves with, with two pharmacists at a time to, to be able to handle the volume. We've seen an uptick in volume. And then we also have cleaning practices in place to make sure we protect. So we have a clinical room that we disinfect after, before and after every patient, and we have face shields. And, and we provide masks to those who may not have masks that want to get vaccinated to ensure. So you don't need to make an appointment, but you're, are able to.
Okay. Next question is the shingles vaccine. Is that two visits?
Yes.
The shots?
Yes. So the single, shingles vaccine requires two visits. The first one, and then two months later, you get the second vaccine, which is the actual same vaccine, it's just the booster. To protect yourself against shingles, and then you're good for life. So good question on that one.
Okay. And the last, my last question is the drug take back program, that includes all prescription and non-prescription and over the counter drugs of any kind, solid or liquid? Is that right?
Yes, correct. We, we do take all medications. We do not take syringes. So anyone that wants to get rid of the syringes, we, unfortunately cannot. But we are working with Brower Sheriff's Office on October 24th, the Saturday. From 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, we'll be out front with a table and a tent. And go ahead and bring back any, any medication prescription wise, not prescription wise, liquids or solids. And we'll be able to properly dispose that, and even to help our environment to, and kind of deter abuse in, in the community.
So you discard or dispose of the drugs, and then you recycle the pill bottles? Is that right?
We just, we, we, we probably dispose, yes, we probably dispose, instead of flushing or throwing away vials or tablets in our system, you know, we'll be able to effectively destroy.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't see any other questions or any other hands raised. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, AJ.
Next is recognition of Park and Recreation Department employee Cyrus Ryder, lifeguard for his quick and heroic action that saved the life of the swimmer in distress.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commission, City Team, and those of you that are watching at home. We wanted to recognize this individual. We, we expect for our employees to continuously raise the level of excellence every day in the services that, that we deliver. And going above and beyond where one is risking their lives for the safety and the well-being of another is truly remarkable and commendable. And we wanted to take this time to recommend Cyrus Ryder and to commend him for his heroic actions. And at this time, I wanted to turn it over to Director Eric Brown. Will, will continue with some remarks of what actually happened that day and why we are commending this hero in our city team.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City, City Attorney, City Manager, City Commission, Eric Brown, Parks and Recreation Director. I'm not surprised of the heroic act that took place last week with Cyrus. I'm there on a regular basis, and these guys train as if they're playing in an NBA finals every single day. They train as if they saving a life every day. So it was almost like second nature for Cyrus to go out when he saw this young lady in distress, and she was actually drowning. And he dove right in. He, his, his training jumped into place, and he was able to save a life. And she was very, very grateful for the fact that our guys were very attentive to what was going on out. And she was very, very grateful for the fact that our guys were very attentive to what was going on out on the beach. So I commend Cyrus, I know he's on the call, I'm not sure, I don't see him, but I know he's on the call. And if he wanted to say anything, I would leave it up to him to just say, you know, what took place that day. But I'm just so blessed to be a part of this team, because this team is second to none. It's a small group, a small beach, and I've worked in large cities, and the large cities I worked in do not train the way these guys train. It's, 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 it's just awesome the way these guys go at it every single day, as if they saving a life every day. So I just want to commend Cyrus for his hard work and thank him for everything that he's done, and the team as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Brandon Martin.
Yeah. Good evening, Eric. I'm really proud of the save, and I'm proud of you and the guys down on the beach, they're just the greatest. I think they're the best lifeguards on, on our whole, every, out of every city. What I don't understand is, I know that they are right on target with the flags, the warning flags, you know what I mean? They are right on target, if they think the current's bad, or even if they were told, they are right on it. How can we educate the people what the flags mean? Because it put Cyrus's life in danger also because of the undercurrents. Even the best swimmers have a hard time with that, don't you agree with that?
I do agree, and, and, and what, what has taken place over the past month or so, our team went out and bought new flags. New signs, and they post them on the beach, and they are educating the people about if it's rough to swim, or, you know, the currents are tough, or currents are rough. And the flags, if they don't know what the flags mean, if it's a green or a red, when, when the red go up, they're being educated. But, you know, people are allowed to swim at their own, you know, risk, so, but we're there. We're there because those guys train on how to swim in rough currents, whether it's taking a machine out to get them, if it's too rough. So they wouldn't put their lives in danger, or they will put their lives in danger, they do every day, but they go out, if it's too rough, they'll take a machine out, they'll take one of the machines out. But we're, we're out there educating, we have new signs up. I want to thank Mike Huck, our chief, our lifeguard chief, for going out and purchasing new signs, putting them on our lifeguard stands to educate the public, to let them know when the tides are rough and when it's safe to swim.
I know they're doing a heck of a job, thank you for your service.
Thank you, thank you for your comment.
Commissioner James.
Also come in and thank you, your staff, what part of the, what part of the beach did this happen on, was this north of the pier or south of the pier?
It was, I want to say, south of the pier.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all very much, I don't see Cyrus on here unless he is on the phone numbers. But thank you Cyrus for your work.
Thank you Cyrus.
All right. Next, we are on to proclamations. First item is LGBTQ plus History Month, Vice Mayor.
Thank you Mayor. Whereas October is Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer plus History Month across the United States. And whereas LGBTQ plus History Month was created in nineteen ninety-four by Rodney Wilson, a high school history teacher in Missouri. And whereas LGBTQ plus History Month celebrates this community's struggles against discrimination and the history of heroism for those who fought for civil rights. And whereas the LGBTQ plus community is an integral part of the social and economic fabric of the city of Dania Beach. And whereas the city of Dania Beach is committed to inclusion, and it recognizes the need for full legal and social equality of LGBTQ plus residents. And whereas the city of Dania Beach appreciates and recognizes the importance of LGBTQ plus History Month as an effective means of educating and calling to action its residents to work together to promote equal protection of all city residents and staff regardless of sexual orientation, gender expression, or gender identity. And whereas the city of Dania Beach is proud to be an inclusive city for everyone regardless of gender, race, religion, nationality, disability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression. Whereas the city of Dania Beach includes productive and caring citizens who are LGBTQ plus, who own businesses within the city, and who contribute to our community through the arts, education, science, politics, faith, healthcare, public service, and all other walks of life. And whereas the city of Dania Beach's commitment to inclusiveness and mutual respect dictates that all young people should feel safe to learn without fear of harassment, and all individuals and families and seniors should be allowed to live their lives with dignity and respect. Now therefore, on behalf of the city of Dania Beach, Lori Llewellyn, Mayor of the city of Dania Beach, does proclaim October 2020 as LGBTQ History Month in the city of Dania Beach. And acknowledging the vital importance of recognizing and exploring the role of gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender, queer questioning, and other people in the community and our history. What a timely proclamation, thank you Mayor.
Thank you Vice Mayor. We also have a Breast Cancer Awareness Month proclamation that I've, that I requested. Since October is Breast Cancer Awareness, and I am wearing pink, not knowing if anybody else is, but it was the time to wear pink. Maybe for the next meeting. Whereas October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which is an annual campaign to increase awareness of the disease and the importance of screening and early detection. And whereas one in eight women born in the US today will be diagnosed with breast cancer in her lifetime. And whereas breast cancer is the most common cancer diagnosed in women between age fifty-five and sixty-four in the US. And whereas early detection is key, and a mammogram can find breast cancer before it can be felt, breast cancers found during screening exams are more likely to be smaller and confined. And whereas if breast cancer is found early, there are more treatment options and a better chance for survival. And whereas women whose breast cancer is detected at an early stage have a ninety-three percent or higher survival rate in the first five years. And whereas in the US in 2020, there will be an estimated two hundred seventy-six thousand four hundred eighty new cases of invasive breast cancer diagnosed in women, and two thousand six hundred twenty cases diagnosed in men. And whereas there are more than three point five million breast cancer survivors alive in the US today, the largest group of cancer survivors in the country. Now therefore, on behalf of the Dania Beach City Commission, I Lori Llewellyn, Mayor of the city of Dania Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2020 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Dania Beach. And acknowledge that the city commission recognizes the importance of education and awareness in combating this disease. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is citizen comments. I have two that were submitted. One is for an item that is on the consent agenda, so I'm going to call that person forward, because I don't know if it's going to be polled or not. Francisco Rojo.
Mayor, that's going to be item twelve. City Place Apartments.
Right, it's on the consent agenda.
It's on consent, yeah.
So I, that's why I wanted to call him forward now, in the event that he wanted to, in the event that it wasn't polled.
I know he signed up to, and he sent in his request to address the commission.
No, he's not here.
Francisco?
He, he was in the meeting initially, but I do not see him right now.
Thanks, well, he's in favor of it, that's what it says on his form.
Oh, there's a hand up, hold on. Mayor, it's the three oh five phone number. I'm going to unmute it if you don't mind.
Go right ahead.
Okay, unmuted.
Yes, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, good evening, my name is Francisco Rojo, I'm with Landmark Companies, and I just wanted to, we're, we're the folks who made this request, and we want to just let you know, of course, that we support it, and we appreciate your attention to this matter. And that is all.
Thank you.
The other item, the other person who signed up is Nectaria Chakras, and she was here to speak on the, on the items that have been deferred. I don't know if she wants to speak now or wait until we get to the public hearings.
Good evening, this is Nectaria Chakras on behalf of the applicant, I'm happy to wait, but, you know, as I said, submitted the letter requesting a deferral of the items related to the wave project.
Okay. Okay. I guess we can wait until we get closer, just to have further discussion on that if need be. Is there anybody, I don't have any other submissions, but I will ask if there's anybody else that needs to speak, that didn't get a, an opportunity to put a form in. Tammy James. You're unmuted. Tammy, go ahead, you can just say, say your name and address, please, and go ahead.
Could you hear me?
We can.
Hi, I'm gonna wait, I'm gonna wait for the item to come up when Nectaria get ready to speak.
Okay, well, she's asking for a deferral, so. Okay.
Isn't, she knows the new date, Mayor?
Yeah, the new date is December eighth, 2020.
Well, we just, I just found out the new date, so I'm gonna wait till Nectaria get ready to speak, and then I'm gonna speak on behalf of it.
Well, I, I wasn't, Mayor, I was not actually going to speak, I wasn't planning on speaking. I was just going to be attending to answer any questions, if that makes any difference to Ms. James. I, I, I don't want anybody to hang around, I wasn't intending to do a presentation.
Okay, why don't we do this? Since there may be other people here as well who are listening and watching for this, why don't, why don't you go ahead and go explain what the situation is? And then perhaps Tammy can speak then, and if anybody else is going to, we can have them speak as well, so that we can just deal with the business part of it, and we'll get to the public hearing portion.
Sure. We are requesting a deferral of the items related to the wave project, so that would be the platnot amendment, the plat, and the two-site plans. We've been meeting with the neighborhood and had a meeting on Thursday night, and based on that meeting, we think we have a little bit more work to do. And as a result, there's just simply no time for us to do that between Thursday night's meeting and today, so we're requesting a deferral.
Tammy, did you want to speak now?
I'm gonna wait, Mayor, I'm gonna wait until the item comes up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Public safety reports. She here?
I'm here, I'm just trying to get video.
Okay. There you are. Great.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Recently, there was a, a letter, a resident wrote in reference to the Publix on East Dania Beach Boulevard, in reference to people trespassing and loitering. The other day, we sent a bunch of deputies over there, and we trespassed quite a few individuals. Told them they were not welcome back there, and we gave them trash bags, and several of our deputies along with them cleaned up the area. So we shouldn't be having that issue again, if whoever wrote the letter, if they see anybody over there again, please call us immediately. We already spoke about the, the Walmart and DEA National Take Back Day. Once again, Saturday, October 24th, ten AM to two PM, at our Walmart 401 East Sheridan Street. Our license play readers and speed trailers have been an amazing asset for us, we have them deployed around the city, and we continue to make felony arrests and recover stolen vehicles. We're still planning the meal distribution with the Miami Dolphins Foundation for sometime in November. The meals are going to be purchased from Dania Beach minority-owned restaurants, and the foundation's going to purchase a thousand meals to distribute. We executed a search warrant on the apartment of a known gang member possibly involved with our recent shootings. Three firearms were confiscated that were the same caliber used in our incidents. We recovered a hundred thirty-eight grams of fentanyl and forty-seven grams of cocaine. Him and two other gang members were charged with possession of a firearm by a convicted felon, violation of probation, trafficking fentanyl, and delivery of the heroin. ATF currently has the firearms and their crime lab to do an analysis. From Friday, September 25th through Sunday, the 27th, BSO Dania Beach deputies recovered two handguns, thirty grams of cocaine, thirty grams of cannabis, made four felony arrests, one misdemeanor arrest, issued forty-four citations, and conducted ten field interviews. This was all done in the areas where the shootings were occurring. From 2018 to year-to-date 2020, Part One crimes are down fourteen percent. Aggravated assaults are down eight percent. Burglary residences are down twelve percent. Robberies are down eleven percent. Sexual batteries are down fifty-eight percent, and thefts are down ten percent. Over the last two weeks, we've responded to the following crimes. One aggravated assault, one aggravated battery, three auto thefts, one burglary business, four burglary conveyances, one robbery, one sexual battery, four thefts, and two shoplifting calls. We have made thirty-five arrests, some of which are included in the cases above. We're working on another community event involving a recording artist who wants to film a video appreciation, and they want to do it at our, at our beach, and have a bunch of our community members attend. So I'll have more information on that at the next meeting. Thank you, and that completes my report.
Commissioner James.
Hey Captain Martin. I've been noticing, I don't know, more homeless, or, or what's going on, it seems to be, it seems to be the same, the same individuals. Some of them look like they really need help. They, they really, they really need help, they're taking over a lot of our bus stations, and our, and our seats for our buses. I often see people standing like away from the bus stop, like they can't even get the shelter, because either people are sleeping on them, and I know it's difficult, I know we have a liaison. I actually saw the outbreak this morning by BB and T, and trying to get them, one of the guys who was like eating out of the garbage can, but I'm not sure what the answer is, but I think that, you know, as a city, we need to do more, or see what other resources that we could tap into with BSO and their homeless outreach, we need to do more, because some of it, it looks very disturbing, and, and the, I don't know, as the weeks go on, I see more, and more, and more. And I don't want to end up like other cities, and I also don't want to turn my back on the homeless population, because, no, it's important to make sure we're taking care of everyone, but what other, what other options do we have? And I know that you pick them up, and then they go back, back out there, and is it nothing that we can do, are our hands tied?
No, not at all, we actually have the best homeless outreach deputies that I've ever seen. They really care about them. We've even extended it out into parts of Davie and Hollywood to keep, keep them out of our city when they're from other cities. So we, 441 and Griffin is completely cleared. It's taken about three months for us to do that, but a lot of, a lot of agencies don't address the issues, and, and we do, and we're very vigilant in it, and we do our best to get them help. And, and we, we firmly explained that if you break the law, you're going to go to jail, we don't want you to go to jail, we're trying to help you. And like I said in the last meeting, we, we've been able to help quite a few. And just through the, the constant daily interactions our deputies are having with, with the homeless individuals, it's actually helping. So we're just going to keep doing that, and it, it's a tricky, tricky issue, because it's not illegal to be homeless. But we're doing, we're doing everything we can, and we, we make them understand what, what they're what, what they're allowed to do if they don't want help, and, and we take it day by day with them. But we, we did, at that Publix, that was an issue over there by that, that convenience store, we, we cleaned a lot of, of garbage out of there.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, Danny, I wanted to thank you for adding in those, the details in your report I had requested with the city manager. You know, a lot of us, especially since hearing about the gang violence and a couple of different things on the news, and maybe also because some people are spending, myself included, are more time at home homeschooling our children, maybe we're hearing news and media before, more than before, and so that, we're hearing more negative stories. And so the residents will call and they'll say, there's been an explosion of violence in the city, why aren't you doing anything? And it's, it's hard to negate that, at least for me, without having data. I like to be able to say, you know, I'm gonna, I didn't get to write it all down, but I'm gonna do the recording, and I'm gonna write down everything you said. So even though I understand that in certain areas, I, I don't wanna take away that, for those of you who are in an area that are maybe experiencing an increase in car thefts this week, or car break-ins, or any, whatever's going on, but I think it is important to know, and to have that perspective, that overall, this is what the big picture is. So I undoubtedly, you know, you have a million things on your plate and so much to do. I appreciate you kind of taking that extra step and presenting that for us, because as Commissioners, you know, we, we, we're with the community, and that really helps us to be able to translate that information to them. So thank you very much.
No, thank you. I'll, I'll continue to do that, and, and please encourage anybody that you speak to, to just shoot me an email or give me a call, and I'll, I'll be more than happy to explain what's going on, where, and if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
Anna, Captain Mark, I just, I just wanted to say, Chief, I really appreciate all the efforts you all have been making. I know there's been some more, it seems like some more events going on more and more lately, and I know you guys have been hard at work and really doing the investigation and trying to make sure that you get everything done. So I appreciate that. I just wanna make sure that you know that we appreciate you and the work that you're doing.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Commissioner Brandon Martin, he didn't have your hand up?
Yeah, I'm gonna tell you, the last commission meeting, I went to go home, Danny's aware of this, and when I got there, somebody was in my parking place, so I was starting to get angry until I noticed that it was an SUV with lights on on top of it. So it was a, a police officer there. And Danny, this is what I meant by adding more on when you report to us. All those little things meant so much to us, because we know what's going on, and the stats afterwards on how everything has gone down, violence and stuff was great. But you've been so excellent, you got two from Meadowbrook within the last 10 days, I believe it is, am I right? Two. And nothing's worse than getting a call to pick up naked people. So what it is, is we were having a big problem with this man who insists on being naked at Meadowbrook Phase 4. So Danny was, was made aware of it. So the first guy, he got him, this is the first one, there's two, and he got both of them. And this guy's telling the police as I'm getting out of my car to get in my parking place, that he owns the building. He was telling them that he, and I knew right away it was a mental issue, and they treated him like he was their child. Meanwhile, the directors of the building, with all this garbage that's going on about a lot of police officers, are videoing the whole thing. And all of these officers are watching this director of a building videoing it. They treated him so nice. Of course, he got his clothes back on, and of course, he was taken away, and he was Baker acted, I believe it was, because it was like the second or third time, right Danny, that you warned him, the second time. Don't come back here, because you will be arrested. So they Baker acted him, and he got out, and he's around again, but we have a, a little posse of seniors, and when we see something, we say something. We call BSO, and they do respond. Now, three days ago, if it don't happen again, new homeless guy, he decides he wants to sleep in the elevator room, I don't know why they gotta take their clothes off, but they do. So he was naked from the waist down. Then there was one in the laundry room, naked totally, but they got them all so far, and I wanna thank you, I really do. And I wanna thank you for the police officer that's sitting outside of this building on our meeting nights, ever since it was reported to you that she's shaking her head. The city manager and I had to go out there while this gentleman was sitting on the bench there, and he wasn't saying nice things. I ran back in the building, and Anna said, let me take you out to your car. She's like the cop too, I guess, she's everything. So she took, she walked me to my car, and now there's a man out there every time I leave here, and I'm very grateful for it. But it's the way you treat them is what I find amazing, and I wanna thank you for it. You treat the homeless, you take them away, but you still treat them good. You're not violent. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
We call, you get them.
City Manager?
Yes, I just wanna say that, that I speak to all five of you so often, whether it's community policing, or crime, or speeding, or, or homeless. And, you know, Danny is very, very humble. He is just a, a hardworking leader of our law enforcement team here. And, you know, when, when there's a desire to raise our participation in augmenting community policing, you know, he's working on, on a concert for, for our community, he's working to, to serve 1,000 meals, partnering with local minority businesses and restaurants in our city. We made 35 arrests, folks, in, in, in two weeks, so it's, it's ongoing, and it's nonstop, and I echo the sentiments of, of all of you, but we really have a great law enforcement leader in Captain Marks, our chief. So I wanted to thank him as well. And thank all of you for bringing all this to my attention and continuously raising the bar, and hopefully we will continue to meet those expectations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Where's Chief Pelisser? There he is. There you go.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, and our fine citizens of Dana Beach. As, as I always start off my report with letting you know that we continue to take care of our personal safety and make sure our fire station's clean so we can come to you or anybody that we respond to, and, you know, make sure we're, good to go as far as, you know, any of this COVID calls go, and we treat you and take you to hospital safely, safely. On a high note, I wanna stress that our Public Safety Education Division started on September 28th. They've been, they raised the bar, and they're, they're teaching virtually, and they've been reaching out to the schools. Three schools so far have participated, which reached over 243 students, and we've done eight presentations. And basically, all this is on fire safety. We will, some of the schools reach back to us, and they're asking for, for more, and we're gonna give it to them. We're gonna include water safety, and we're gonna do some programs coming up that will also be able to reach out, do custom classes for seniors, our HOAs, and do it all virtually. So that's what we've been working on, and our Public Safety Division has been very hard at work getting this done. So that's all I have for my report, and I will get links and emails so that everybody has the information that we could share.
I don't see any hands raised, so thank you very much, Chief.
You got it.
Thank you.
All right, consent agenda, do we have any polls?
Motion to approve?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, no bids and requests for proposals, public hearings.
9-1 is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dana Beach, Florida, approving an amendment to the Dana Beach Community Redevelopment Agency, CRA's redevelopment plan to provide grants for residential assistance programs, including but not limited to, and I'll amend this at this point, rental assistance, providing for conflicts, for the providing for an effective date, sponsored through the CRA. As you, the Commission knows, as you said previously, as the CRA board, the resolution submitted by the CRA board was modified to delete references to mortgage and utility assistance, and to have a clause added to the, the resolution, which we will do for this resolution as well, to take out those two topics, and to make sure that any monies remaining after the rental program is concluded revert back to the city. So that would be an amended resolution.
Fisher James?
Yes, I thought, can you hear me?
You're, you're again far away, but yes.
Because I asked the poll 7.12, and I thought that's what the approval was for.
We didn't hear that.
Didn't hear you at all.
Well, that's what I said. I said 7.12, and he said motion to approve, I don't know. But I want to pull 7.12.
City Attorney, may I amend my motion for, to approve with the exception of, I think Commissioner said 7.12?
Hold on, let's, let's find out if that's the right way to do it. It might have to be a withdrawal or something.
Well, right, that's what I'm asking with the Attorney.
What we could do for 7.12 to accommodate Ms. James is to bring the consent agenda back for that particular item, amend the minutes accordingly, and then accommodate her concerns and questions, and then consider that as a standalone item.
So is that a motion, or what, what, what do we have to do?
It will be a motion.
So do I make, what do I do?
So who does what?
Yeah, let's, let's go ahead, and we'll do a motion to consider 7.12 independently from the consent agenda, and we'll just clean up, we'll clean up.
So make the motion?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No.
I'll read the title, it's a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dana Beach, Florida, approving a conditional loan commitment to partially finance development of the City Place Housing Development by City Place Apartments Limited, authorizing the city manager to execute Florida Housing Finance Corporation, FHFC's local government verification of contribution loan for, knife for conflicts, further providing for an effective date. This is the item that Mr. Francisco Rojo addressed earlier, I don't know if he's still on the call, but he was present at that time.
Yes, can you all hear me better now, since it's on my phone?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. So I pulled this item, not because I'm against the item, but I pulled the item because it is a conditional loan commitment, and I wanted to make sure that the public had an opportunity to either speak on the item or be shown what we are approving, and to ensure that it will come back, so that, you know, this is a very public process, because for me, you know, the approval and the buy-in from the community is most important to me for any project. So I did have an opportunity to meet with, with some staff that, regarding this project, and I'm on board for it, but I just wanted to publicly say that and let our residents know that this will come back for site approval and complete commission approval. I just don't want anyone to think that we are not being transparent in approving things that they have not seen. So for me, it was important to just throw that out there.
So with that, I'll, I'll approve 7.12.
I'll second it.
I'm a motion to approve 7.12, sorry.
Okay, I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, and then reverting to 9-1, which I announced it would be amended to be consonant with what the CRA board did last hour. So that would be an amended resolution for your consideration about the rental program.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak for or against?
Make a motion to approve 9.1.
I'll second it.
I just wanna ask, I just wanna make sure that the public is aware of what took place, because I don't think everybody attended the other meeting. Basically, this has to do with the $250,000 in rental assistance that's going into the CRA, and there's an amendment to the plan that had to be made because there was not able to do that, made some changes to the resolution, as the city attorney mentioned, and there's been some discussion as well about the, the funding and reimbursement of that money. So, I see a hand up, I'm not sure who it is, says iPad.
Hi, this is Louis Ramoli, 902 Natur's Coke Road, Dana Beach, Florida.
Go ahead, Louis.
Okay, so I was on that meeting earlier, and I guess I, what I'd like the, the public to understand very clearly is that the city and the CRA are trying to do two separate plans. And from what I understood from Frank DiPolo, if the monies that are used from the city go through a CARES Act program from the county, there's reimbursement opportunities for the city for that money. If the money that's being used by the CRA, on the other hand, for the same program, I believe that money is not reimbursable. So my question is, why wouldn't the city of Dana Beach be more frugal about the money that's being spent by taxpayers to initiate one program for the entire city and not separate it by CRA and by city? I also heard a comment from Commissioner James, who said that she wanted to help the most vulnerable. Well, my comment to Ms. James is, how do you know the most vulnerable is not west? How do you, how do you know that the most vulnerable is only in the CRA? That is unacceptable, and I think we all ought to stand back and think about everybody in Dana Beach, not just people in certain areas, because I know for a fact there are people out west that are hurting just as much as anybody in the CRA, possibly more. I don't know that, but neither do you, or neither does any Commissioner. So it's important, as a resident, that we use our money wisely, and if there is an opportunity for the city to do one program under the city umbrella that helps everybody, including the CRA, including people out west, including people east, then I think we should consider that, especially if that money can be reimbursed back to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Fisher James? I don't know if Frank wants to answer the first part of the question. Frank? If you can.
There is.
Sorry.
Hi. Well, yeah, what was discussed in, in the CRA board meeting was that were the city to utilize the program that the county offers to administer the rental assistance citywide, the chan, the reimbursement process is much cleaner, and we virtually guaranteed to get CARES Act funding for all that rental replacement. If the city decides to run its own program, have a separate program for the city, have a separate program for the CRA, then there is a, a good chance that we may not be reimbursed for some or all of the money, including the monies that are given to the city. So we suggested that the city pursue the options that would provide for, that would be most advantageous financially, which would be to try and use a county program and obtain the CARES Act funding for that. And then, and then the city wouldn't have to use the 500,000 that was already put in the budget, that money could be repurposed for something else altogether, if you wanted to.
Thank you for that clarification, Frank. I, I usually wouldn't directly speak back to a resident, because I know with our decorum policy that we put in place, we're not even supposed to be addressing Commissioners or, or members of the Commission directly, but since that was allowed to happen, I'll go ahead and, and address Mr. Ramoli. Mr. Ramoli, I, I just wanna let you and everyone else know that in order to establish a CRA, which was established far before I was on the board, the, the then Commission had to prove that there was a need, they had to approve that the most vulnerable people with slumming blight was in an area. That CRA area was established. It then was expanded upon, which you have to go back and prove that you have those same blighted and slum conditions. blighted and slum conditions in the expanded area, which was approved not by the city and not just by the county. There is a procedure and protocol that goes into place, and so I look at numbers, and I look at statistics, and I understand that while I am sitting on the CRA board, I have the ability to separate myself from being a commissioner and just work as a CRA board member, and that is what I'm going to do, and that's what I've been doing, and what I will continue to do. I also understand, as a seated commissioner, that my job is also to make sure I represent the entire city, that is why I brought back a program that would, or a mirrored program, or, or I, I'm the one that brought it back to say, okay, let's do X, Y, Z in addition, because I did hear the needs from the residents. I'm not here to be divisive, I'm not here to argue with anyone, I'm here to serve everyone in that city, and so that means, yes, unfortunately, we do have certain areas of this city that have slum and blight, and, you know, that are vulnerable, and I'm not taking away from anyone else, and I'm not saying some people aren't vulnerable outside of the CRA area, there are vulnerable people all over the state of Florida, all over this country, all over this world, but what I'm telling you is that the CRA, that was established based upon numbers, based upon need, and not only the city, but the state and the county saw that need, I, when I'm on the CRA board, that's what I'm going to serve, the CRA community. When I'm as a city commissioner, I'm going to serve our residents, and, you know, I, I hope that you can understand that, I won't make a decision all the time that will satisfy everyone, and that will make everyone happy, but my phone has been, my phone hasn't rang, you have my phone number, um, you have my contact information, my contact information for anyone else is on the website, if you ever wanted to speak to me outside of trying to come before a commission meeting and say anything, you know, you can, you can reach out to me, Louis, and I'll always be available to talk. Thank you. I'm just, I, I have to say something. Um, I think the concern, and it's my concern as well, is that if there are an opportunity here, if we were to do this program, which I am not opposed to doing a rental assistance program, I've spoken on this many times in the past now, I've never been opposed to doing a rental assistance program, what I'm opposed to is doing two separate programs. Uh, and what I indicated in our prior meeting was, um, it has been very clear from the, the comments made by other board members, CRA board, that, that was not the way that they, that they did not agree with that, um, not all, but the majority. And the concern is, is that there is now $500,000 worth of rental relief, that potentially we might only be able to get reimbursement for half of that, whereas if it was done citywide, it, we have a much stronger potential of getting the entire thing reimbursed. And the, the comment that was made by our finance director earlier, if I'm not mistaken, and, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Frank, was that, um, it hooes us to do what we can, as a commission, to try to get money reimbursed to us, use a, facilitate the administration of this in the way that would be most beneficial to our residents, um, by, by making sure that the taxpayer dollars were going into the right place. So, although I realize that this is just an amendment, it's an amendment to the plan, it is something that needs to seriously be discussed and, and considered, um, when we do get all of the information, because we do not have all of the information yet. So with that, um, you know, when the time comes, and we're going to actually discuss the criteria, we're going to have, I guess, the city manager and the CRA interim director discussing the proper criteria, and see what the county says after the meetings this week, and once that is done, then we'll, we can address it that, however we need to address it. But, um, I have the exact same concerns as a taxpayer in the city, that the opportunity to have money reimbursed to the city is being missed. So, Mayor.
Yeah, respectfully, Mayor, I, I think we all agree with that, uh, or at least, I, I will say for other people, I agree with that, and if we can get the money that way, then great, we can. Um, I mean, we had a five oh vote, so we all came together on that CRA vote, uh, which is, this is what we're just talking about now again, and we all got there, so of course, if we can, uh, get it paid for, we're going to pursue, we're going to pursue that option. I don't think anyone here is looking to be wasteful with public money, and, uh, you know, I, I think everyone did the, the right thing in, in doing that, in, in investigating that option, and having Frank and, uh, Candito look into that, get us that information, and we'll, we'll see what we can do. I also think that by, you know, making sure that the, the, the money that's spent and used to help people, uh, is used, and then what is not goes back to the city, it doesn't, you know, every, we're doing things in a way that is, uh, responsible, it is, uh, it has accountability, and it builds trust, and there's a lot of distrust with the CRA and several, uh, parts of the city, that's something that we're working on. So I think that the way we're handling this builds trust, builds accountability, and, uh, with the, the really almost sometimes drawn-out conversations that we have, I think we're fostering a, a great deal of, of transparency as well. So, people may not always like the path that we're taking to get there, but I think where we did get is to a good, good place where the entire city of Dania Beach is getting assistance.
Well, like I said, I will go ahead and call the roll on the vote, but like I said, my, I, I just want to make sure that the record is very clear, that I don't agree with the program being separated, I don't agree with us potentially not being reimbursed, I, I, I'm not going to fight on the amendment, because I don't think that that fosters anything at this point, but I think it needs to be very clear that if it turns out that there is a, a bigger problem with this, it will have to be revisited, and I'm pretty sure that's what's going to end up happening here. So, in any event, go ahead and call the roll.
Commissioner Randamar?
So we did this already. Read, read it back to me.
This is to approve, a motion to approve, uh, the resolution.
Yes.
As amended, according to what the city attorney, uh.
Yeah, that, yes, that's what I thought we agreed to be for, yes.
Okay, Commissioner Harris?
I say yes, but we have to look at the full reimbursement possibilities, and they're out there, we just need to look hard at them, so, yes.
Commissioner James?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Odom?
Yes.
Mayor Llewellyn?
Yeah, the caveat's mentioned.
By zero.
Items?
Items nine, two, three, and four, since they're public hearings, I'm going to have to read the titles of all of them, but we've announced earlier that, um, they will be deferred, if the commission so approves, to the December eight city commission meeting. Nine two is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, approving the development design guidelines, DDGs, and site plan, SP 05620, submitted by Kimley Horn and Associates on behalf of Dania Beach Marina Corp., for the property generally located at 90 North Bryant Road within the city of Dania Beach, Florida, as legally described in Exhibit A, a copy which is attached to this resolution, running for conflicts, further providing for an effective date. Next, nine three, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, approving a platnot amendment, delegation request application, DR 07220, submitted by Kimley Horn and Associates, Inc., on behalf of Dania Beach Marina Corp., for property planted under the Bryant Road Warehouse Flat, located at 90 North Bryant Road in the city of Dania Beach, Florida, as such property is legally described in Exhibit A, a copy which is attached to this resolution, running for conflicts, further providing for an effective date. Nine four, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, approving the development design guidelines, DDGs and site plan, SP 02420, submitted by Kimley Horn and Associates on behalf of NV Marina Holdings LLC, and RJ Marina Holdings LLC, for property generally located at 50 and 70 South Bryant Road, within the city of Dania Beach, Florida, as legally described in Exhibit A, a copy which is attached to this resolution, providing for conflicts, further providing for an effective date. And last, resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, approving the plat to be entitled Waves at Dania Beach, PL 162-19, submitted by Deny Land and Surveyors, Inc., on behalf of NV Marina Holdings LLC, and RJ Marina Holdings LLC, the applicant, for the property located at 50 and 70, right, South Bryant Road, Dania Beach, Florida, legal description is contained in Exhibit A, a copy which is attached to this resolution, running for conflicts, further providing for an effective date.
Um, Ms. Chakas is still on, is she still on the line?
Yes, I'm here, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, and you had said before that you wanted to have this one deferred, uh, we give the opportunity now for anybody who wants to speak.
That's correct, I would like to have all four items deferred.
Okay, and deferred until, I believe it was December?
December eighth, correct.
Okay, I see, Tammy James, raise her hands up again, go ahead, Tammy, please state your name and address.
I live at 255 Northwest Cameron James Avenue in Dania Beach, Florida, I'm at 33004, and the reason why I, um, the reason why I wanted to speak is because we have been having meetings with the developer. The developer never, uh, got in contact with the association to even let us know that they were deferring the meeting. The last time we spoke with each other, they said that we would be, um, attending the city commission meeting tonight, um, on the 13th. I just found out last night that our meeting has been deferred, no one, no, sent, sent anything out to us to let us know that, that the meeting was going to be deferred, so I wanted to speak on behalf of this project, if I may.
Go ahead.
Okay, we've had three meetings with the, uh, we've had three meetings with the developer. Our first meeting was on August the 20th, the second meeting was on September the 23rd, and our third meeting was October the 7th, and we, as the residents here, um, on the Northwest Bird Point area, which is from US One, Sterling Road, Bryant Road, and Old Griffin Road, so I'm here as the president of the Northwest Bird Point Civic Association to speak on behalf of this project. We have averaged about 50 residents or more per meeting that we've had. Um, the developer started out at 20 stories high, they did bring it down to 16 stories, um, high, and they let us know that was it, and they was not going to, um, bring it down any other stories, there, there wasn't going to lower it any, come down past the 16. So I, we are concerned, and, um, we are concerned about the, uh, project, this project is huge, it's humongous, and, um, I have concerns, and the reason why I have concerns is because Daniel Point is still not have been fully developed yet. We still have three to four other residential buildings that's going to come up at Daniel Point. We also have an, another project coming off Sterling Road and Bryant Road, it's eight stories high. Now we have this 70, the 70 wave and the 90 wave project. Each one of these buildings is going to be 16 stories high, it's 380 units per building, and I have concerns about the impact, what it's going to be doing to our residential area. I, I'm, I'm kind of disappointed that the development, the developer said that they were going to wait until the new commission come. I wanted to come tonight and speak on behalf of, I wanted to put it on record with this commission that we have, and I, and I hope this commission and the new commission will also listen to the residents, because we're being impacted so, so, everything is happening to our area right here. It's, this is not like townhouses, like that was out at, um, 45th, Southwest 45th out there, where they were going to build nine townhouses. The residents didn't want that out in their area. Our commission reject, our commission voted it down twice, and I just want our area to be treated the same way that, that us, um, that's out west, I would like our area to be treated the same way. They have, they have, um, tried to give us money, they offered money, but the money that they're offering, and the improvements that they're offering, um, the city already takes care of that. We already, uh, the, the city already paint houses, um, they have first-time home buyers, we have traffic calming, and us B-hunts, that's, that's funding that they want to give us that's already been taken care of by the city. So I, I just feel like our seniors, our seniors and our residents over here on the Northwest side, our seniors cannot afford to keep paying all these high taxes that, every time one of these big high rises or big buildings comes up over here on the Northwest side, our taxes are increasing, and our seniors cannot afford it, they're losing their properties, and that's, that's my concern.
Sorry.
Excuse me? But I, I did think that at least the developer should have, um, contacted the association to let us know that they was going to have the meeting deferred, they didn't, not contacted us at all. And that's why I wanted to come on tonight, to let you guys know that we're really concerned about what's going on to us as the residents here in, in the Northwest side. That's my concern.
Okay. Anybody else at this time?
Hello?
Yes.
I'm not, hold on a second, could you, could you hold on one second, I, I thought you guys like lost me, I wasn't finished saying what I was saying. Could you hear me, Mayor?
It sounded like you were finished, and it's actually gone to about seven minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, but in reference to this project, it's so big, the project is humongous, I'm totally against this project, and I want you guys to know that we, as the residents, we're against this project, and I wanted it to go on record and that you guys know that we are against it. Thank you, I am finished.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner James, did you have something you wanted to add, or no? You had your hand raised, I can't hear you. Oh, sorry, um, yes, is it, can everyone else unmute themselves, I don't want to have the same issue. Um, I, I do, I do know that, I've been to the three meetings that, that the community has had, um, and although I have not spoken with the developer himself, I have spoken with the people who are working with him, and, uh, there, there is a huge concern, and as with any project, I'm always concerned with the buy-in from the community, and right now, this, this project doesn't have the buy-in. Um, I am skeptical that the reason that this is being deferred is because they are waiting for a new commission, and I have expressed that disappointment in that, um, because I, I think that, I think that says a disservice to us who are serving now, and it says a lot about who people think will be elected in the 21 days. I think everyone who is elected are, are elected here to, um, work for the residents, and that hasn't always been the case, but lately, it seems that that has been the case. Uh, as mentioned, when the development came, um, for out west on 45th, we not only, we voted twice against that project because it did not have the support of the residents, and not saying that that's the only reason that we shouldn't vote against the project, but we definitely need to listen to the voice of the residents. I, I pulled some numbers, and I, I am concerned about the density that we have going on in our city, just on Bryant Road, we have 14, over 1,400 approved, um, residential units that are being built, or that have been approved, and, um, this will add an additional 300-plus units. Um, that's not citywide, that is just on Bryant Road with Daniel Point and these other developments. I think we need to really look, take a look at where these developments are being built, the impact that it is going to have to the communities, I do know that there are a lot of developments that are squeezing certain communities, especially this community, and that has a lot to do with opportunity zone, and not that just one development is going to be the end-all, see-all for communities, but it's definitely going to promote, it's going to continue the trend of gentrifying this area. We are squeezing this area with a lot of different developments. Um, I don't, I don't know how much our infrastructure can handle, how much our solid waste can handle, how much our city can handle, our cost of service can handle, but it's going to impact, these type of developments, it's a trend, and if we keep approving developments of this magnitude, the entire Bryant Road is going to turn into that, and I think that we have control. And I think that we have control over what developments look like. And I would like to be, especially for this development, I, I would like to be the bridge between, you know, the community and, and this developer and this development. I'm sorry, just so we can make sure that we get something that the community wants and the community can speak for, and it's also a win for the developer. And so I wanted to say aloud, I have, I have been on those meetings. There has not been a tremendous amount of support. And there has not been a change of the plan for three consecutive meetings. Not one single plan, not one single change to the plan of this project. And as is, I'm definitely against this project. I do hope that, you know, Mike Lally is listening to this. And he really compromises with this community to bring something forth that, you know, both the community and the development, development community could be proud of. Because it does impact our seniors. It does impact our neighborhoods. It does impact, you know, those areas. And so I do hope that whoever is on this commission has an ear for the residents and not just an ear for approving things. Thank you.
There were some accusations hurled there that I, I don't really think are fair. Because I, for one, have not been told that they are waiting for the next commission. What I have been told is something completely different. And in fact, that there is some redesigning that's going to be taking place, and it's going to take some time. So I, I'd like to give the attorney who's here representing an opportunity to respond to that because I, that's the, that's the information that I was provided, and I wanna make sure that's correct.
That, that's correct. We, we actually had our, this is what we had our last public presentation meeting on Thursday evening. After that meeting, the owner, Michael Lally, has decided to take a step back. And, and, you know, frankly, he needs to take a look at what he can do and what he can't do. And there's a redesign that's involved. They would definitely need additional time in order to accomplish that because that, as you know, involves having brand-new plans submitted to the city for review and before that submitted to this neighborhood and discussed with the neighborhood. So I can't make any promises, obviously, because I don't know. This is all, you know, brand-new information, which is why we are deferring. But, you know, the goal is to have some sort of compromise with the neighborhood and walk hand in hand to the commission meeting when these projects are placed back on the agenda and hopefully have the support of the neighborhood. Will that happen? I don't know. But we certainly want the time to try.
Commissioner James?
Um, the, oh, I'll, I'll let the other people speak first.
Yeah, I just wanna say, I watched, Mike is a good man, though. Mike is all to know that. When we throw out somebody's name there, it isn't that he's a bad man. He's a good man. I like him personally. And you're gonna laugh because I watched it, the virtual of it, and on the bottom of the screen, it was sort of like the presidential election, all these people saying, "I'm against it, I'm against it, I'm against it." And he did say, they did say that they have a lot of work to do yet. So I don't think that anything that they're saying right now is in stone. I think he cares about the area and he'll do the right thing. My thing goes the other way. I'm worried about the patch. I'm worried about the height of these buildings. I would love to see them do a, a study to be sure that the shadow isn't going to just destroy our patch. But Mike will end up doing the right thing. I know him that well, and I think he will. That's all I wanna say on that there.
Yes, the reason why I made the statement that I made, it isn't anything against Mike because I have a good relationship with him too. However, I, I do know that I made the comments that I made because I've had several conversations, and everyone hasn't been in the room for those several conversations. So I'm gonna speak on the conversations that I had, the conversations that I've heard in the, in the community meetings that I've been a part of. I do hope that we get to, yes, I do hope that we get to a place where both the community and both the developer are satisfied and happy with this project, and it gives us positive benefits and impacts for this community. But I will not just sit here and pretend like, you know, I didn't see the same exact project three meetings in a row that was stated that it was not going to change. I am happy that the tone has changed, but as I stated, when it comes back, I, I hope that whoever is sitting up here and representing our city and our residents are truly working for our residents. So if no one else wants to speak, I'll make a motion to defer the project.
Commissioner Brandemart, raise your hand up again. I don't know if that's a mistake or not.
No, I don't have a hand up. I lowered it.
I just lowered it. You don't have to.
Oh, thank you. That's okay.
So I'd like, you made a motion to defer. Is that what you did?
Correct. Um, do I have to, Tom, do I have to do them item by item, or can I say nine point?
No, I think, I think we can lump them for nine, two, three, four, five, all items. All four items would be deferred.
I'll second the motion on the deferral.
Yes. Can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner, this is, this is for all items, nine point two through nine point five. Commissioner Brandemart?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Otten?
Yes.
Mayor Llewellyn?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Next item?
Nine six is a, was called a quasi-item, meaning that anybody who's going to speak from staff and public would have to be sworn in. We'll deal with the public if anybody comes up, you know, deal with Corinne in a minute. First, I'll read the title. "A Resolution of the City Commission of the City of Daniel Beach, Florida, Approving the Site Plan for the Construction of an 82,197 Square-Foot Warehouse Building in the IRO Industrial Research Office Zoning District, SB 0320, submitted by Hope Calhoun Esquire on behalf of the property owner, GPT Daniel Beach Owner LLC, for the property located at 1900 Northeast 7th Avenue in the City of Daniel Beach, Florida. Providing for conflicts, we're providing for an effective date. If any commissioner has been contacted either for or against by the applicant, if you could please disclose that under the Jenny rule." The wise friend can proceed.
Good evening. Corinne LaJoy.
Corinne, let me swear you in.
Go ahead.
Swear affirmatively. You'll give the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you. Good evening. This item is for a site plan application. It is on 1900 Northeast 7th Avenue. I do have a presentation that I can go through quickly, if Frank would be so kind as to put it up. The property itself is zoned industrial. The zoning is IRO. It is located in our employment center, and there are no violations on the property. Thank you. The applicant is requesting site plan approval for the construction of an 82,000 square-foot warehouse. The property is currently vacant and located east of the airport. There's no residential nearby just because of the nature of the location of the property. The applicant has submitted a delegation request, which was reviewed through DRC and was able to be approved administratively because of the, the small changes to that. Uh, next slide. This shows the aerial photo. You can see the location of the property is towards the left side of the screen that's highlighted. So left of, further left is where US-1 goes around the airport, and the port is to the east or on the right. The next slide. The applicant's proposing to develop the site that's currently vacant for the industrial warehouse. The applicant's proposing the construction of an 82,000 square-foot building on the property. The proposed industrial use is compatible with the surrounding industrial uses and the airport located to the west of the property. There was a traffic study that was submitted by the applicant and updated in June and was approved by the city's traffic consultants through the DRC review process. The next slide shows what the site plan of the property looks like. You can see the building itself. The next slide shows what the renderings of that new building will look like, that new warehouse building. The next slide, we talk about the Development Review Committee, and it did go through two review cycles in May and June of this year. There are some DRC comments that remain outstanding that must be addressed prior to the issuance of the building permit. Those outstanding issues are identified in the staff report as well as in the resolution. Should you approve the resolution, there will be conditions of approval. With that, staff's recommending approval of the application. With those outstanding conditions identified as conditions of approval, and I know that the applicant, Hope Calhoun, is here along with some of her development team as well. If you have any questions for myself or, or the applicant, we're both available.
I don't see any hands raised right now from our commissioners, but this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Thank you, sorry. Commissioner Brandemart?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Otten?
Yeah.
Mayor Llewellyn?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Next item is discussion of possible action. We have a resolution.
The resolution title is "The Resolution of the City Commission of the City of Daniel Beach, Florida, Opposing the Proposed County Charter Amendment That Purports to Preempt Municipal Home Rule Authority for Zoning and Other Regulations on County-Owned or Leased Property Within Municipal Boundaries, Authorizing the Joining of the Lawsuit Filed by the City of Weston Against Broward County Seeking to Remove Proposed Charter Amendment From the November 2020 Ballot, Authorizing Expenditure of $2,500 to Join the Lawsuit, Providing for Conflicts, Further Providing for an Effective Date." Most of you may recall, some months ago, when this first came up by the county commission, a proposal to use for surtax money, ballot question for this coming referendum election that would take away the rights of cities to object and to control in any respect use of county-owned or leased lands if they use, if the county sought to use surtax money to build or construct or anyway use the monies for transportation-related facilities. The ballot question was then turned down by the county commission. A couple weeks passed, the county commission reconsidered, and then chose to restore the ballot question, and it is now on the referendum election ballot. The City of Weston filed suit and has been joined by the cities of Pompano Beach, Deerfield Beach, Lario Lakes, Davie, and Fort Lario, each of which is contributing to help Weston defray the cost of the lawsuit, $2,500 to try to defeat the ballot question. Again, this is a, something that would affect our city, where the city would have no rights whatsoever under its zoning laws to object or to impose regulations or mitigation of any kind that the county wouldn't seek to use if it uses surtax money to build transportation facility. So the recommendation from the cities has been to, if you choose to join the suit, again, be quite candid, it doesn't, it's not critical that the suit is joined. It's more a show of solidarity with the other cities. But one way or another, it will be, really very quickly, I'm told, the legal process was filed yesterday, which called a motion for summary judgment, which means both sides have filed motions that say there are no factual issues that they dispute. It's just a matter of law. The judge will rule presumably before the ballot is up there for consideration, that we expect very soon. But it's the consideration, if you wish, join the lawsuit to help contribute $2,500 to the City of Weston in its process to defeat the ballot issue.
Commissioner James?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Tom. I just need clarification. Sorry. In joining this lawsuit, what is the outcome of the lawsuit? If we win, only that it won't be on the ballot or won't be counted, or?
It, it, it would, it would, if it's, I'm expecting that a court would rule beforehand so that if it's too late, it would be too late to remove the question from the ballot. But it would invalidate the vote if, if the court finds that the question is misleading. That is what the City of Weston and the other cities are maintaining, among a number of other legal issues. And so it would not pass and preserve the right of the city to control any county development in the city under our zoning code for surtax-related zoning.
So even if the voters vote for it, if we win the lawsuit, if we decide to join and win the lawsuit, it would just be like a no vote?
That is correct. It would be.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I'm in support of this 1,000%. I think that, that's something that we fight very strongly for, which is home rule. We go to Tallahassee, we fight for it all the time. And I can't imagine if the notion that I received from staff in Broward County trying to understand this ballot question was just that, you know, oh, other cities do it, and, you know, this will make it easier for the county. And in my experience and understanding, if, the city is always willing to work with the county because we rely on them for so much. And that if it was something that was good for our city and we wanted, I don't know why we wouldn't approve it. But I, I did not like the idea of allowing the county to blindly put something in our city, transportation-wise, that could have adverse effects on our residents or even our infrastructure, and we have no say-so over it. So I'm definitely in favor of contributing $2,500 to this lawsuit. Thank you.
Commissioner Harris?
I'm agreeing with what Commissioner James just said. There's been a huge push by the Broward League of Cities on this issue. It's yes on one, no on two. We've been hammering the point home on that for quite some time. I'm gonna go back as, as far as March. There's also an aggressive advertising campaign, talking to voters, social media. It's yes on one, no on two, because that would give the county the right to build a bus depot from surtax dollars on any of the county property, and they could drop that right in the middle of a residential neighborhood, and we don't want that. Or they can build a train station for trains that we don't have. You know, the county is trying to take away our ability for home rule, and we hear that all the time. Home rule, home rule, home rule. So everybody who votes, and if they've already voted, I hope you voted no. If you're going to vote in the future, vote yes on one, no on two. And I support this. Was that a motion, Commissioner James, for support?
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm waiting to see what the other discussion is, but I definitely wanna make a motion to support item 10.1.
Okay. I'll second it whenever you're ready.
All right. Not a public hearing, right, Tom?
It is not.
Okay, so let me just call the roll on that?
Again, if, if there's any member of the public that wishes to speak, they are afforded that right under the sunshine law.
Okay, so I don't, does anybody, if anybody that's in attendance interested in speaking on this? I don't see any hands raised. Go ahead, call the roll.
Commissioner Brandemart?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Otten?
Yeah.
Mayor Llewellyn?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you all.
All right, next is commission comments. Commissioner Brandemart?
Yeah, just two quick ones. I liked reading the memorandum that we have in the back of our books from our city manager. And I was so happy to see, "We look forward to completion of the installation of the Christmas lights during the week of Thanksgiving." That's great. I remember one year was like a week before. This is a wonderful thing. I wanna thank her for that. And also, the other is a comment. You know, I believe you might have been there because I seen your husband and the dog, Mayor. But when I ate at this wonderful little gem, it's not so little, Ocean One. But I had a little bit of a disappointment, not in Ocean One. They exceeded expectations. They are what we need. But we don't sit inside, and outside is always more crowded at restaurants because of COVID than inside. And I'm facing, just like I'm facing in here, a wall with nothing on it. I just wish that, because this place is so wonderful, somebody would donate some kind of a painting for that wall. It's unbelievable. We have to face, it's like just a wall of another building. And they could have done a better job knowing that these restaurants were gonna have outside seating. It'll really look bad for them. But if you haven't been there, go. It's unbelievable. It's unbelievable. $4.99 is all lunches, and it's outrageous. Thank you.
Commissioner Harris?
I wanted to make mention of Denzer and Darren again for helping with the flooding issue on Southeast Third Terrace with part of the residents. It was late on a Friday night when Sonia called me, and Denzer was right on his mark right there, and then Darren went over there to help with the flooding issue, which we, you know, we can't, we can't stop the rain, but we can certainly help with the flooding. So that's probably what we're going to do, and they came up with an excellent plan. So I wanted to thank them for stepping out on a Friday night and taking care of that.
Wow.
Again, I want to say, as far as the county amendments, yes on one and no on two. I mean, I can't stress that enough. And also to the residents regarding the wave project, I think they're all doing the right thing. They're doing their due diligence and taking the developer's task and making sure that the development is agreeable to the neighborhood. Because I remember, I want to say it's four years ago now, when we worked with Stellar Homes and the project out by the Estates of Fort Lauderdale. It was a, and Chicky, I see Chicky nodding her head, it was a long process. And everybody had a vote. I mean, they were, remember Chicky when they were going to Charlotte's house and having coffee? But now, four years later, they got it all worked out. They got their new washer and dryers, they're getting their new windows. So it's the due diligence that the residents need to do to ensure that the quality of life is preserved, and that if the residents aren't happy with it, everybody has a voice to lead the charge into getting what is acceptable for their neighborhood. So everybody that was on that call, the developers, the attorneys, I applaud you for your diligence, due diligence, and we'll work through the process as long as it takes, as long as it takes.
Make them happy.
Thanks, everybody. That's all.
Commissioner James?
No comments to add. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I'll be real quick, since it's Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I'm speaking to all my women, my commissioners, my admin over 40. You know what I'm going to say, Commissioner Brannigan, I bet. To please start scheduling, or maybe you don't, maybe something else. To please start scheduling your mammograms with COVID. Let me tell you, all the doctor's appointments and everyone's trying to make are backed up. It's hard to get doctor's appointments. It's hard to get those appointments. So start making them now, so, because you're not going to get them for another couple of weeks or couple of months, and a lot of people are getting very frustrated. So while the hos, I wouldn't say that the hospitals are overwhelmed. I would say that certain departments are backed up. So everyone, although, all you women over 40, I hope that you're getting, you're making those appointments, and just for your doctor's appointments as well, that you're, we're not neglecting that. If we're going to keep getting our flu shots and looking out for our COVID safety, we're going to include that too. That's it. Have a great night.
Vice Mayor, how about men?
Well, sorry, yes, you're right. I was talking about the mammograms, but the men too, with their screening, their colonoscopies, everything they need to be doing. But it's not the time, just because we're sitting home, to let our routine health get neglected. So you're right, men, women, get it all checked out.
Thank you.
I'll be very brief tonight. I just want to thank our businesses, our local businesses, for continuing to be vigilant, even though there have been a number of restrictions that have, I'd say most of the restrictions have been lifted with regard to COVID. But our businesses, for the most part, from what I've seen, have been, they're still basically following the same rules. And a lot of them aren't even, are even, it's the same rules in their restaurants or in their retail stores in order to make sure that COVID doesn't continue to surge. There is talk of another surge coming. There's talk of flu season coming. As we know, it will be coming. We heard that earlier. And there is still no vaccine. So hopefully, we can all be a little patient and try to get through the rest of this time. And, but I will say, I have been very impressed in the way that our businesses in particular have been taking the lead on this and making sure that they are keeping people safe and doing business the best way that they can without making, making life too difficult for the patrons that come into the different businesses. So I just wanted to throw out a little thank you to everybody for that. Appointments. I have an appointment for the Housing Authority. I don't know if anybody else has any other appointments.
No appointments at this time, Mayor?
Not for me.
Okay. For Danny Beach Housing Authority, I have one right now, and that is Louis Romoli. Can I get a motion on that?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're looking for a second? Our motion to, sorry, motion to approve the Danny Beach Housing Authority appointment of Louis Romoli.
Commissioner James?
No, go ahead. She, I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? I'll have the next one next meeting. There's somebody with their hand up, but we're.
Tammy Norton?
I'm not sure of the reason for the hand up.
Who?
Tammy Norton? Is this a resident?
Mayor, did we fill the pension board?
No, I, what we did for the fire and police pension, but not for the general pension.
Okay.
Tammy Norton, you're unmuted if you want to speak.
I believe that that is a, that name looks familiar from the project. I'm not sure if they just got on or.
Okay. Well, it's been heard, so, I mean, we can, it's going to come up again, so we can, I think we're going to move on because we spent a period of time on that already. All right, next administrative report. City Manager?
Yes, good evening. I wanted to let you know that we did a total overhaul over audio at the chamber to be able to get a better communication to our resident, to our residents, and that will be complete by the end of this month. We did the whole visual last year, and the audio was lagging behind due to COVID. I just got the confirmation from Monica that the audio component will be complete by month's end. So that would really increase the enhancement of the whole experience for our residents and those that listen to our meetings either on YouTube or Channel 78. I also want to let you know that the chamber installation is in process and will be complete by month's end. As a matter of fact, our October 29th Special Magistrate meeting will be in person. And I know a lot of residents have called. There's a lot of items, short-term rentals and things like that. So that will be ready to go, so not, not, only will we be safer against COVID, but active shooters, and everything will be ready to go in our city by month's end. November 2nd, which is Monday, the first Monday in November, we will open up City Hall at 8:00 AM. We're working on a game plan to continue to stay proactive, and we'll be bringing the entire detailed program to you at the next commission meeting on October the 27th. But we're very excited and will continue to be proactive, and thank you for your support throughout this pandemic. We should be getting, going again at 100% of our workforce, and we just continue to do the things to keep our residents and our employees safe. By the, by the end of the month also, we will install a kiosk for payments, augmenting the experience for our residents and the services that we provide for those that do business with the city, utility billing and paying in a, in a much more visible and safer environment, but they could also come to the city at any time, 24/7 to do so. So that will occur. A couple of years ago, I know that it was brought to my attention, I believe Commissioner Brandimart told, you know, cities that spend money and they put up their holiday decorations like a week before Christmas or the holidays, or, you know, two weeks before, be it Christmas or Hanukkah or any of the holidays, we don't pay less just because we do it at the last minute. It still costs us the same. So very happy to let you know that Candido and Fernando are working with the vendor to get that done in November and bring some light to a very dark and challenging year. We're working very closely with our interim CRA director on the signage. We will be able to place our signage on Danny Beach Boulevard further west. We wanted to make sure that it's in our city boundaries and jurisdiction. So we're doing a survey just to be certain, and I've also been in communication with my counterpart in Hollywood. And the sign on Griffin will be moved further west, so that'll capture a lot of the residents that felt a bit disenfranchised because the welcome to was, you know, too east. So in the middle of challenges and, you know, lies opportunity, so we're very happy to be able to do that. Very, very successful bookbag and PPE giveaway that we did for the kids back in August, working with Parks and Recreation in our police department. So we're going to mirror that this fall, October the 30th, with our fall event for Safe Trick or Treating Costume Contest. We're very excited on this partnership that Eric and Parks and Rec has working with Chief Marks. And that'll take place from 5:00 to 8:00 PM here at the City Hall parking. And that concludes my report, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, so I don't, maybe I should put this for a discussion item for next meeting, unless it's a quick thing. But just for logistical purposes, does this mean we should all plan to be in City Hall on the 10th? I don't even really know who I'm asking.
For the November meeting? Yes, yes, Vice Mayor. We're in line to have our first official meeting on the 29th, if all goes as planned with the vendor and our first mission meeting.
On the 29th of the 10th? I said the 10th.
The 10th of November for commission and the 29th of October for Special Magistrate.
Oh, okay. Are we going to reassess that if, you know, because I don't know, maybe there might, and I know we put so many things in place, but is there the option if there's? I, I think we're going to need to discuss at some point, like if we have a commissioner with a little cough or something like that, and even though we have the barriers in place, I want them to know that they can continue on with their meetings like this.
Absolutely.
To get together offline.
Absolutely.
So we can call?
And, and I would recommend that. We'll work with Tom. I know that the governor extended the virtual meetings until the end of October.
Right.
Whether it's you, the commission, or we, the staff or the residents that come to the meeting, we're going to continue to have a hybrid, you know, as we continue our operations. So yeah, we will be shifting gears. We're monitoring what's happening in the schools in both Miami-Dade and in Broward County. So that would be our goal, Vice Mayor, that if anybody doesn't feel well, stay home, and we will be able to provide the opportunity if that is allowable, that we would recommend.
Well, let's have a meeting offline, maybe with Linda as well, so we can just put together an email, because I want, you know, all my colleagues to know and administration to know, everyone who's involved in the commission meetings, if you think you were exposed, if your kid was exposed, there's probably going to be a lot of times where something comes up, and if it's just as okay to be on doing it by computer, I want that option to still exist, even though we went above and beyond with the athletic barriers. So maybe we can all, we can get together, put that together, and then send that out to everyone, just so we're on the same page about it.
Well, wait a minute. How, Mayor, how many people will be allowed?
Well, that's, I think that's also something that has to be discussed. I was just going to say, I think you're also going to need to include IT in that because I know there's issues with the technology as well and not being able to do multiple things. It's one of the reasons why we're doing it this way.
Right, and we will.
But you said people can come to that meeting? Residents? How many?
We don't know yet.
We don't know yet. We're just letting, we're just letting you know that we're progressing, but ready to shift gears. We're going to test, like the mayor said, the audio, the visual, like the vice mayor says, if somebody's.
It's just our dry run.
Right, right. We don't want to let our guard down.
Yeah, okay.
You also have to realize, I mean, this last extension by the governor happened on the 30th of the month.
Yeah.
We really found out that it was being extended, like the last day it possibly could be, and it was in the evening, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, it was late.
So that being the case, we don't know what's going to happen.
Okay.
We don't know if the governor's going to extend it again. If the governor doesn't extend it, then we, we're going to have to figure something out. So it, I mean, I think it's better safe than sorry, at least if we have it set up.
You're right. You're absolutely right. Safe than sorry. That's been your motto.
And I'm glad that the mayor did say that, because it did come in at the 11th hour. We were ready to go with IT Parker just in case, because we're seeing this happening a lot, be it with the county or with the state, that we're getting these orders, you know, on a Friday night or at the last minute.
It was after 8:00 PM, after 8 o'clock, I remember, because I asked her, was she going to send out a memorandum? And she said, it was late at night. I even called Tommy, said, "Too late to do it tomorrow." He was going to meet with the mayor.
Yeah.
The following day.
Yeah, especially that a lot of us on that sit up on that dice are a little bit mature. So we definitely want to take care of everybody. So we're constantly adjusting and seeing what we could do.
Commissioner James, go ahead, you had a head rush, too. Sorry about that.
No, it's okay. Vice Mayor, I hope that we can cough or sneeze and not get kicked out of the meeting. Allergies. I'm just joking. I wanted to ask because, especially because a lot of our kids are going back into school, and this is going to be a conversation I'm going to have with our Parks and Rec director and our city manager. But, and I've had several residents, quite frankly, ask me, "When the bleep? Are the parks going to be opened back up because their kids want to play at the playground? A lot of other things are going back to normal?" I don't have the answer for that. I do know that we are trying to exercise precautions, but, you know, my major concern is being able to provide something, or if we are going to provide something, some type of after-school, something for those kids that are going back to school that, I can't imagine how many DCF cases that they have now, because these kids have nowhere to go, and their parents are sending them to school because they're essential workers. And after they get out of school, what do they have to do? They have no safe haven. And I'm afraid that for their safety, as a lot of kids are, that are home alone and that will be home alone. So I do want, I don't expect the answer now, but that is a conversation that I am going to be having with you, Anna and Eric, because I just need to know the answers. But is there any update on if our parks are going to open just the playgrounds, maybe? Or if that's still going to be shut down until, I don't have an update on that?
Eric will jump in, but the conversation that I had with Eric last week talks about signage that have already been ordered, because we're going to be opening our playgrounds and more of our park facilities. So Eric was going to give you guys a detailed update in my next report, because he's also working with his colleagues from Parks and Rec from all the rest of the cities in Broward. This is just a good enough time, Eric, if you can give, you know, the commissioner and the community an update.
Yes, good evening again. We are, the Parks and Rec staff have a meeting tomorrow at 10 o'clock. We've ordered all of the machinery that we need for spraying down our playgrounds. Our playgrounds will open on the 19th of this month. It'll go into my report as well, manager. And our buildings.
They won't or will?
They will. They will open on the 19th. Playground. We ordered some machines that can spray those playgrounds down, but we also ordered some signage that came in last week. And through legal, we were able to, we will be able to let the citizens know that they will be playing on those playgrounds at their own. And through legal, we were able to let, we, we will be able to let citizens know that they will be playing on those playgrounds at their own risk. Playground are one of the, one of the hardest um, amenities to keep germs away. Um, so we'll spray them every day, every morning and every night. We're gonna spray them. We bought the machines. We brought the uh, the solutions to spray them. So we're gonna do that daily. Um, and we're gonna post those signs there. And then right after the nineteenth, the following week, we're gonna look to open up all of our facilities, especially when the city hall opens up at fifty. Only because I want to take that precaution to make sure that um, we, we train in our staff to make sure that they are educating our public as they come in our facilities. So the following week after the nineteenth, we are looking to open up all facilities. And we have, through HR, we have all the material that we need. We have the signage, the distancing. So we're prepared. We'll be, you know, we're gonna fine tune our um, trainings tomorrow at ten AM. And we're looking to open up everything by the end of the month.
Okay, thank you.
Does, I just want to say one thing, please. The signage does not make you not liable for a lawsuit.
Yeah, we under, yes, we, yes.
The signage does nothing.
Well, I mean, we just, not so much the signage making people unaware about a lawsuit, but to, but to just inform them of, you know, their risk of going and, you know, swinging or getting on a playground. We just want to make, we want to educate the public to let them know. And the sign will simply state that. And on the signage, it will state the fact that these playgrounds are very hard to keep clean. But they will be sprayed on that, on that sign. It will let them know. They will be sprayed daily. Um, and uh, and we also letting them know that they will be playing at their own risk, whether, you know, and I, I sent it to legal, I sent the sign to legal before we printed them, and I got the thumbs up from Tom, letting us know that it was perfectly legal to post those signs, whether we'll be, still be at risk or not. I just want to educate the public on what is actually gonna take place when they allow their kids to play on the playground. And also, and also let them know that daily they will be disinfected.
And I just, I wanted to add to that, it, this is changing every single day. I, I just found out today because a friend of mine's son plays for the Florida Gators. Nineteen football players from the Florida Gators team just tested positive. They have just put their season on halt. So you know we're gonna be very proactive, but keep shifting gears all the times because this is changing all, and you're talking about eighteen and nineteen and twenty-year-olds. Nineteen players, Commissioner, tested positive.
I know the numbers are going up. They've even reversed in Italy. They went back to the beginning all over again. The numbers are not going down, they're going up.
Even the school board numbers are going up also. And I'd rather, I'd rather have a parent mad at me because we're closing, their kids are safe than to be mad at me because their kid have contracted a virus and now sick and a parent of, you know, you know, died from it. So we're gonna take all precautions that we can take and be as safe as we can be with an uncertainty that we just don't know about. So um, we're gonna be safe, we're gonna be safe about it. We're gonna make sure that we do everything in our power to keep our citizens safe as well as being able to have some type of recreation. Because I get it, um, being cool in the house, you know, kids want to play, and I get it, but I want them to be safe as well.
No, thank you. I just wanted to know so I, I could be aware of what, you know, what our message is to our residents.
Yes, and.
And I support, and I support your guidance.
Yeah, in the next two weeks, we're gonna, we're gonna be full-fledged, running on all cylinders, or at fifty percent, at fifty percent in the beginning. And then once we see how the numbers either go down or go up or whatever, then we can start gradually going to seventy-five percent before we can hit a hundred. But right now, we want to crawl before we learn, before we start walking and then walk before we start running. We don't want to get out just running right away. We want to, we don't crawl right now.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, for a clarification on city commission meetings, when the governor's office gave us this extension, which expires November one, it does mean the city commission will have to have a quorum, meaning a minimum of three people physically present in a room to conduct business. If a commissioner is ill, uh, the, the, the law has been construed to allow a person who's ill to attend by remote. But it's not permitted otherwise typically. So we'll have to look at what happens. There's a possibility. He would extend it, but the governor's office told all the city attorneys and all the county attorneys, do not expect that we're going to give you this exemption any further than November one. So we must be prepared to have the commission ready to meet in, wherever you pick, whether it's in commission chambers or IT Parker, and then we'll have to figure out how to accommodate the public. There's just have to be ways to do that. So.
And only two could be, oh, Tom, you said only two people, two commissioners could be absent, sick before you, because of quorum. Is that correct?
When I'm saying, it's the other way around. You have to have at least three people physically present, or you can't have a meeting. The other two, if they are sick, could participate, we think. We have to look again at attorney general opinions because it's been many years since it's been done, that they could attend and participate remotely. But that I have to confirm and clarify in the coming couple of weeks.
You would be clarifying if that counts towards the quorum?
No, the quorum has to be, three people have to be in the room. That's, that's.
Got it, got it.
That's required. Secondly, another good thing that happened tonight from your approval of the BSO police and fire contracts is that finally, we will be able to allow BSO police to occupy the Dana Point property uh, that was put aside for it to have a substation there. And that was the last thing we needed to get done. We'll work towards opening that substation for the Dania Beach Police, and that should be within the next couple of weeks.
Yay.
That's all I got.
Thank you. City clerk?
Upcoming meetings tomorrow, Wednesday, the fourteenth, at two PM, you have a CRE board special meeting for executive director interviews. Uh, then on Saturday, October seventeen, at twelve PM, there is a tentative CRE board meeting set. Uh, depending upon the outcome of tomorrow's meeting. So it's tentative at this point. And then Tuesday, October twenty-seven, at seven PM, is your regular city commission meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you for that, or adjourned.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good day, good day.
Good night.